Please silence your cell phones so you won't interrupt the meeting. At this time, we'll have our invocation by Commissioner Redcoats and our pledge by Commissioner Booth. Please stand.
Dear Lord, as we gather here tonight to do the work of the people of Beaufort County, let us remember that on All Saints' Day, all of those that have passed before us and all the work that they have done to promote Your Word in this world. We ask tonight that we act with kindness and fairness and support those people of Beaufort County. We ask all this in Your Son's name, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Place the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, are there any conflicts of interest? Any commissioner having any type of conflict? Hearing none, we'll move to the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero. Thank you.
Six.
Six, I'm sorry. Bad math. Public comments. Our first person is Lynn Wood. I cannot make out your last name.
Price.
Price, okay. Please identify yourself and you have three minutes. Come to the podium, please.
I'm Lynn Price. I'm with Blackwater Forest Street Incorporated in Jangle, North Carolina. We recently bid on a snag and drag operation in this county, and we were low bidders and did not receive the job. We have been in business, I've been working 45 years doing this type of work. I mean, we've been doing this snag and drag probably 15 years. You know, you cut a tree, cut it in pieces, throw it to the side of the bank, or you winch it to the side of the bank. You know, we're very capable. We work for Whitehouse, and we do 3,000 acres a year of pruning with Whitehouse. And we were picked out of five companies to do the work. We do it for 10, we've been doing it for 10 years. The first year, they had never had 3,000 acres done in a year. We did 3,000 acres. First year, we did it. Numerous jobs, I worked for NRCS, doing stream restoration. We do build ponds, dig ditches, worked all over Beaufort County, Martin County, Hyde County. I mean, to be told that we're not qualified sort of is a slap in the face to me, you know. I'd rather just someone say, "Well, we picked somebody else," you know. And I don't, we didn't give all our references that we have. We gave the ones most recent with snag and drag, which I didn't think, you know, snag and drag, you know. I didn't think you had to give everything, all the companies you had worked for before to get a simple little job, you know. And I can say this is a small job, you know, and it's, we got men willing to work. All you got to do is not be scared of snakes, water, and be willing to work. And, you know, I don't, you know, you bid on something, it's going to how bad you want it, whether you take it a low bid or a higher bid, you know. And I know we can do the job. We'll do the job, done bunches of them. And every reference that we gave told us they gave us a good reference, so I don't see why we won't pick. And I could go on for a long time. I could tell you jobs we've done, this, that, done, won't do no good, but the bottom line, we should have been picked. That's $22,000 that your county's going to lose, given to someone you don't think is competent. And if it was my money, whoever did that would not be working for me long, you know. That's, that's a lot of money. That's a lot, to me, it is. I don't know about you guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Ray Larry.
Good evening, everyone. Ray Larry from Chaco, Winney. And I ran across this item here a few weeks ago. It's from the Johnston County, North Carolina Board of Commissioners meeting of June 21 during a budgeting session. And there was an exchange between one of the commissioners, Mr. Fred Smith, and the chairman. And the chairman asked why full funding for Johnston County public schools cannot be approved at this meeting. And he answered succinctly. "I am committed to helping to educate our children. I am not committed to having our children indoctrinated. Critical race theory indoctrinates schoolchildren with some of the most toxic and anti-American theories ever considered. It pushes the vision of America." That's what we're talking about. We're talking about this great country. "It pushes the vision of America to cast our history, our culture, our traditions, and our founding documents in the most negative possible light. And if that's not bad enough from teaching that history is evil, they have now moved to telling white students that they are evil. Instead of helping young people discover that America is the greatest, most tolerant, most generous nation in history, it teaches that America is systematically evil and that our hearts of our people are full with hatred and malice. And it is so far from the great Reverend Martin Luther King Jr., who said that our children should be not ju, should not be judged by their skin, but be judged by the content of their character. Indoctrination of generations of children with these extreme ideas is not just immoral, it is a program for national suicide. We cannot have that doctrine that attacks our country and attacks our people taught in our public schools. The only power or authority that we have as county commissioners is our funding power." Thank you. Another thing, if you want to read this, it's not in there minutes. It's on our video, and I transcribed it.
Dawn Stann? Did I say that correctly? Slan? Okay. It's L. I didn't know whether it was a block of T.
I'm a, I'm, I'm, should be a doctor. Hello, my name is Dawn Brinson Slan. I'm a resident of Beaufort County, a small business owner, and a taxpayer. I have worked in the pharmaceutical industry for almost 37 years. My roles have been in quality and/or regulatory compliance, and were of increasing responsibility up to and including Vice President of Quality. Thirty-one of those years were with GlaxoSmithKline, a global company that also manufactured vaccines. I have the background and I know the specifics. I have participated in many FDA inspections of facilities for new products, product changes, regular inspections, and for calls. I'm asking that everyone here make themselves aware of the real information and the data that is available for the COVID-19 vaccine. Until you can get your computers and do some research, let me provide a few facts for you. First, there is no approved vaccine available on the U.S. market. It is plainly stated in the labeling for the Pfizer Beyond Tech vaccine that Pfizer has no plans at this time to provide the Comorbid Noddy vaccine to the U.S. market. All vaccines are still being provided under an emergency use authorization. While this used to be a great way to provide lifesaving medications to people in life-threatening situations, when no other drug is available, it is no longer safe. In changes made to the regulations for EUA in December of 2020 by President Obama, there were many loopholes for those in charge to circumvent the system. Changes like no requirement for manufacturing the drug under EUA according to good manufacturing practices. These were foundational regulations put into place and enforced by FDA to protect the American people. This is just one of the several changes to that regulation that does not have the help that the American people in mind. Second, there was no recommendations by FDA to allow for boosters or mixing vaccines. The CDC overrode the FDA's vote 16 to 3 against allowing the booster and sent out the call for everyone to get the booster. FDA did say that there may be benefit to those with compromised immune systems over 65. In addition, there was significant data from children that had been vaccinated as part of the study, along with the adverse event data from adults, to show that there was minimal benefit to get children getting the vaccine. And yet, once again, the CDC has recommended the vaccine for children ages 5 to 11. Why would you subject a child to so many unknown factors when there's no data to show they are significantly impacted from the virus? And why would you do it based on six months of data from a study that does not end until 2023? All the vaccines were either developed and/or tested with scientific technology that utilizes abortion-derived fetal cells. This information is on the NC Department of Health and Human Services website. In addition, whistleblowers from Pfizer have provided emails and validation of this information and the attempt of senior scientists at Pfizer to hide the information. These emails came out in the last couple of weeks. This goes against my religious beliefs and probably many others if they knew it. The data on the CDC website for North Carolina has not been updated since July of 2021. The last time I checked, the data showed that we were at 52% of expected deaths for all causes, and the only deaths being reported were COVID deaths. How in the world can a local health department provide data supposedly from the state without completing data accurately on federal websites? And finally, the first study with results for unvaccinated compared to vaccinated shows that the vaccinated are most likely to have more severe sickness when they get COVID because the vaccine has proven it does not prevent you from getting COVID, and that they are more likely than unvaccinated to have more detrimental outcomes. If we're going to push an unapproved product, can we at least get some face time for the rest of the story? I'll be happy to provide any of the information I've mentioned to those that would like to have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is our legislative updates, and we do not have any of our state elected officials here. So we will move forward with our items for consent.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item number two, Sheriff's Office.
Let's put the pulling of item number two. Is there a second? All in favor? Raise your right hand. Pose. Five one. We'll send your item to, let's see. Let's put it under K. It'll be item number three. Let's move to our item for discussion and decision here from our Health Director, Jane Mattson.
So, let's see, day 587 since COVID started in Beaufort County. And by the way, that's the gestational period for an elephant to carry a baby, so it just goes to show how long a period of time that is for that. I just wanted to start out with showing the North Carolina numbers and that the North Carolina numbers are starting to go down in the right direction. They have been, you know, at the last meeting, I was showing that they started going down. And so they continue to go down in the right way, right direction. And then we're seeing the same thing in Beaufort County. At the peak, the second peak here, the one that we just recently went through, we were at 60 per day. We are right now at nine per day. And when I say nine per day, that's the seven-day average I'm talking about. So we have had 7,381 cases that have been reported to the Health Department. And right now, I'm estimating about 127 active cases that we have. We have one person in the hospital, and we have one person on the ventilator. This is just showing you the, how we compare it to the counties around us, so it's still up a little bit higher than some of the counties to our west. But we'll be down into that same quartile, I guess, pretty soon, probably. As of October 26, I compiled all this data. We had, and this was in part in response to a question that was asked at the last meeting about the impact of the vaccine and what it's having on cases. So on that day, we had about 50% of our population had been fully vaccinated. And then between June 1 and October 26, we had 14% or 362 of the vaccinated people that were identified as a case and 2,299 that were unvaccinated. And so I said during that meeting that I thought the vaccine was working because I would expect 10%, or 50% of the cases to be vaccinated if it didn't work. So I wanted to bring in a little bit of scientific data to show you, calculations. So with chi-square, what we call two-by-two table, what you do is you compare the observed numbers with the expected numbers. Since half the people in Beaufort County are vaccinated, I would expect 50% of the cases to be vaccinated, are vaccinated as well. So then, using the calculation, which is that formula you see at the bottom there, I'm able to determine how significant those differences are. And not just say they're different, but to tell you, to show you the numbers. So in this, here, I did the test, and in the big circle down there, you can see what I plugged in, 50% expected vaccinated, like in row one, and 50% expected unvaccinated in row one. And then I use the calculations, and then in the small circle, you can see a number The lower that number, the more different they are, the more significantly different they are. So what this has said in this test of a little over 2,000 Beaufort County residents since June 1 is that the vaccine did have a significant impact on the spread of, or the cases that we had during that time period. So just looking at testing numbers, last week, we had 595 that we tested, and that's down from 833 from the week before. So the demand for testing has gone down drastically with the numbers of COVID cases going down as well. And then you can see that positivity rate of those that we tested out of those 595, 5.9% of them were positive. And this makes the third week in a row now that we've been down below 10%. Again, that's a number we want to stay below for the positivity rate. So both are good signs, the numbers being down, as well as the positivity rate being So the test sites that we still maintain in the county from the Health Department's perspective is that we have testing at the Health Department from 7:30 in the morning to 11 o'clock every day, Monday through Friday, days that were, you know, open. And then we have a second site that is at Hackney Avenue, at the Temple of Jesus Christ, their Life Center, which is across the street from the church itself. They are actually open from 8 to 5 to make it a little bit easier for people to get access to get tested. And as I've mentioned before, I just want everybody to remember that you can call BASS and get a free delivery there if you have transportation issues to get tested. So looking at our vaccination demand, you can see that the last week, it was down. We had 100 people that started the vaccine the week of, or last week, ending 25th of October. So we're still seeing about that 100 per week number of people that are starting the vaccine. This has nothing to do with the booster, second shot, or any of that kind of stuff. So where we sit right now is 50% of our total population has completed the vaccination. 89% of the vulnerable population, the elderly population, have completed the vaccines. 60% of those that are 18 and older, and a quarter of the children that are between the age of 12 and 17 have completed the vaccine. The vaccine information that's coming out right now is that we're expecting the final approval from the ACIP for the 5 to 11-year-olds tomorrow. And then we would expect the state standing orders to come down to us by the end of next, or end of this week. And then we'll be able to start offering the vaccine to the 5 and 11-year-olds at that point.
The state of North Carolina has no position on 5 to 11-year-olds getting vaccinated?
The state, yeah, they have a...
What's their position?
Positive.
Positive, something needs to be done. Is there going to be a mandate from the governor on children being vaccinated?
I don't know. I haven't heard anything about that. So I can't really say, I can't speak for the governor on that.
I'd like to remind the public that the governor has no statutory authority to mandate that children, or any of us, get vaccinated.
Yeah, I think the Public Health Commission would have to probably make that mandate if there was one.
Have to take the General Assembly to do it.
Well, just to clarify, I think the General Assembly gave the Public Health Commission the authority to do that.
They think about it.
Okay. Again, I'm not worried about it. I was just trying to clarify the way I understood it. So we do offer the first doses of Moderna, Pfizer, and Johnson &amp; Johnson on Mondays at the Health Department from 12:30 to 4:00. And the second doses are given on the second, or the Tuesday. The second dose is on Tuesdays. And then we're just, I threw this in there because the flu shots are now being done through that drive-through on Wednesdays. So what we have done is we moved all those, to those dates, so that we can focus in on the boosters, which has just come out for us to do the Pfizer, the Moderna, and then Johnson &amp; Johnson. All right. So the booster recommendations are for 65 and older, 18 and older, if you're at high risk, like either you work in a high-risk area or you are at high risk for your health And then we're also, pretty much, if somebody is at, if they say they're at high risk, we pretty much go ahead and give them the shot. And we're not really vetting it too much for them. We are doing the mass vaccinations out at the Community College. Appointments are already available online, and we're trying to do about 600 per day. Is our, kind of our target. I know we have five days in November that were scheduled, and then some days in December. But after about two weeks, we're going to look to see how many people are going through, and if the numbers are not that large, then we're going to move it back to the Health Department. But it'll be an assessment done in about a couple of weeks. We just want to make sure that everybody knows it's available for them to go online at the Health Department and sign up for a, an appointment. We're going to do it drive-through as long as the weather's nice. And this is a layout of the driving pad out at the Community College, so you can see when you turn left at the second entrance into the Community College. As you get to the driving pad, you'll go in there, you'll check in, and what we're basically doing is making sure that you're eligible because you have, you know, it has to be at least six months since you got your last one. And then we'll give you paperwork, and you drive around, and then go through the new building out there where they do the EMS training and stuff like that. And as well, we'll have nurses that are, be providing the vaccine at that time. Right, a lot of the time, a lot of the questions that you asked last time was about immunity. So I said, okay, let me throw up some immunity stuff and try to present that to you so that it might be easier for, when I explain something about the antibodies and stuff like that. So take your immune system, there's different parts of the immune system. One is the mechanical and basically barriers of defense. And that involves your skin and chemicals, mechanical stuff like sneezing and coughing. And then you have some cellular activity that occurs up in the nasal area, which fights off bacteria and viruses and those kind of things. And then you have antibody development, which is basically seroconversion. So you're going to hear that term, seroconversion, a lot. So there's five types of antibodies. IgM and IgG are the most common ones that you'll see in somebody's blood. IgM is a little bit short-term. IgG is long-term. So if I draw your blood and I see a lot of IgM, it means that you've had a recent infection or it could still be, it's an infection going right now. If I see a lot of IgG, it means you probably were exposed to it a while back. If you see a high combination of both, you're probably in between there, some stage. IgA is more common in the respiratory system, so that's going to be up, and a lot of times you're not going to see that at all in the blood. So you've heard about antibody test in the nose, that seems what they're going for there. When you hear antibody test in the blood, it's usually IgM and IgG that you're talking about. So IgG is the important one when it comes to what we call lasting immunity. So I was trying to explain last time that some people have positive tests, but they don't have the COVID disease. And this is what I was referring to, is that the COVID could be up in your nose, and you can have that mechanical defense going on, but you don't seroconvert because it's just growing in your nose. It's not heavy, you might have some of the IgA in there, but you're not actually seroconverting IgM. And then you have those that seroconvert, which means that now they have the IgM and IgG in their blood. And that's about 63% in one study of people that hospitalized converted. So it also means like four out of 10 didn't convert. What those show is that the amount of viral load or how sick you are has a lot to do with whether you seroconvert or not. So here's one study where it was showing, each of these columns represents a different level of seriousness in their illness. The far, I guess that'd be on your far left, non-hospitalized. Then it goes to hospitalized, intubated, which is more serious, deceased, and then, of course, they showed also immunocompromised people as well. So like I said, the higher IgG, the better protected you are against COVID, or what we all call natural immunity. So if you look at this, I put stars by the ones that have the IgGs on there, so you can see at each of those columns how much of people develop IgG. So on the non-hospitalized above it, you can see about 60% of people converted, and they weren't hospitalized. If they were hospitalized, about 75% of them converted. If they were intubated, about 95% of them converted to IgG. And then if they deceased, their blood had a 99% protection against COVID. Of course, that's a different circumstance. And then with immunocompromised, only 10% of people converted. So again, seriousness of your disease comes in. So this plays into some of those questions that was asked last time about why we don't count people that have had it because they may be the 40% in the non-hospitalized, and I don't know that. So I'm recognizing that it happens, I just can't tell you all the percentage of people that fall into any of these categories. Does that make sense? Here's just another one showing total antibody level in, the green one is showing people that have been infected are sick with COVID. If they had a mild case, you see the bar's lower. If they were seriously ill, they had a much higher bar. And then the blue compares to somebody that's never had the infection but got the vaccine after the second dose. So it's comparable, and I'll point out, it's not even as high as the natural one. But you can see that by not having had it, you have a good number, a good level. The red one shows people that had vaccination and had the infection. So again, the vaccine helps keep them up.
If you've been vaccinated, and say you get COVID again, are all the symptoms the same for everyone, or is there a different variety, an alternate variety of symptoms for different kinds of people?
Well, the stuff that I've seen is that the reaction's much less if you've been vaccinated.
I mean, you don't always lose your sense of smell or taste?
No.
Okay.
You may, you can have, it can have any variety of level of illness, even if you've been vaccinated. It's just the amount or the probability of it is lower. And because a lot of it has to do with viral load, and then you may have something else going on at times attacking your immune system so that you're not able to fight it off as well. There's a lot of certain, it's very complex. And that's why sometimes when I'm trying to explain it, I wonder if I stumble over my own words to get there. But the answer is that you can have a variety of symptoms, whether you've been vaccinated or unvaccinated. But vaccinated... or unvaccinated, but vaccinated typically protect, protects people as a population.
I, I, I mentioned this because in early September, I got sick with something. I thought it was a cold, and it seemed to be a little more than that, but it wasn't too terribly bad, got into chest, but nobody around me got sick. And I was around a lot of folks, they'd all been vaccinated. And, and then generally when somebody gets a cold, somebody else gets one too.
Right.
You know what I mean? I was, um, so I, I was just wondering, I, I did get the tiredness, it went on for about a month or a month and a half, that's the one symptom I did get.
I'll tell you about, I have a billion 65 years for a bill.
Well, that's okay, well, this is for the public.
I don't know.
I'm just giving context to this.
I know, thanks, so. Um, so I just wanted to show how the booster shots work with bringing that immunity up. You get your first shot, you have a response, but when it starts to go down, then they time your second shot, and that really shoots you up, and that has a little longer lasting effect. Now, the booster shots, and how often booster shots go, I've said from the very beginning, I don't know what they're going to schedule for it. It turned out in this case here, it was six to eight, or six months for this booster shot, and I don't know if it's going to be another year for another booster, or if it's going to be five years for another booster, or 10 years. I wish I could tell you all that, but I'm not even reading that on the news. I know I hear some people say it's going to be a yearly shot like the flu, and other people say, well, it should last for a lot longer, so I, I just try to tell you all what I know, and not try to speculate on anything like that. But that's, that's the how boosters do keep your immune system up. So, this is the, uh, this is the, um, coronavirus, y'all seen that, um, model before? And I put a little star by two things there, the blue star is by what you call spike protein, and most everybody's probably heard of the spike protein at this point, and then the red star is by the nucleocapsid protein, which is, uh, more on the surface and inside the cell wall itself, so it's right there on the, the cell wall. And so this is important for a couple of reasons, because when you do, when you create antibodies, antibodies all try to attack some part of that cell, this virus. The vaccines that we have all attack the spike proteins. Your natural immune system may fight against the spike proteins, uh, and more commonly though, it also fights against that, uh, the nucleocapsid protein as well. But our, the vaccines don't attack that. So that's important to know, because if you do an antibody test, and you get the, um, the nucleocapsids only, or if you have those, that means you had an infection at some time. If you have the spike protein antibodies, then it could mean you either had neutral, or a natural, uh, infection, or you could have gotten the vaccine. Alright, so that's why I'm trying to say how complex antibodies are when you say, should we get an antibody test? Currently, there are 89 antibody tests for COVID on the market. All of them are EUA right now, so none of them are FDA-approved except for one, which recently was about two weeks ago. So that's why you probably have a lot of unknowns coming about when it comes to recommendations about antibodies, and what it means, and the interpretations of antibodies. Certainly something that a little old health director from Beaufort County's not going to be tied into as much as somebody that works in a lab, a virology lab, or something like that. Uh, but I do know this, uh, they look like a Y is a, the shape that we talk about for an antibody, and the only part that's important is the very top of that, that blue part up there, which is what binds to either that nucleocapsid protein that I said, or to that, um, spike protein. And there's other parts of the thing that could bind to, and that's what kills the, the virus. So, uh, um, I don't know, I just want to make sure that y'all understand that there's different antibody tests, there's 89 of them out there, so we don't, we don't do any testing at the Health Department, uh, because if you came up with the results, we wouldn't really be qualified to talk to you about whether it means you got long-lasting antibody or immunity, or short-term immunity. And so, the CDC does have a guideline for antibody testing, and there's three points that I want to make sure that y'all understood from this, is that the CDC right now does not recommend antibody testing in the ca, in, to replace the virology test. So, to tell if you have the COVID or not, they're not recommending the antibody test. Antibody tests can vary in their individual performances and characteristics. This is a, this is a reference to the fact there's 89 tests out there, and we're not sure what level means you have immunity yet. There's a lot of studies that are going out, so the FDA has to approve those before we can get to a point where we tell the public, this means this. And then antibody testing is not currently recommended to assist, or to assess somebody for their immunity level. So, we're not supposed to use it to assess the need for a vaccination in an unvaccinated person, or to quarantine somebody, or any of that. So right now, the CDC is saying, I can't use any antibody testing, or what I would use antibody testing for as a health director. But that doesn't mean that you can't have a test and talk to your doctor about it, that's where, that's where I'm going with this, if you want antibody testing, you should talk to your doctor about it. And then, in a way, it leads up to this particular slide to show you that the state has been doing some, uh, sero-prevalence, that means they're going out randomly taking people and drawing logs and seeing what their, um, their, um, antibodies levels were. And in North Carolina, uh, out of 1,000, uh, one, yeah, 1,302 people, in, look in the circle, they were looking at the nucleocapsid. So that means they're only looking at people that had been infected with the COVID, has nothing to do with whether they got the vaccine or not. So these are people that got infected, it looks like about 26%, or 22.6% of North Carolinians were. So if I look at Beaufort County, that means that we probably had about 10,622 cases of COVID, um, you know, infection in Beaufort County, not the 7,300 that I've found, you know, doing my reports to the Health Department. My biggest problem now, knowing that number, is that I cannot tell you how many of them actually got vaccinated, so it'd be nice if I could just add that number to the number of vaccinated, but I can't, because I don't know which of these people would have gotten vaccinated without a, a big study. Any questions? I'll go to the next.
Yes.
Okay. So, communicable diseases, um, I don't know if, uh, most people here may not know this, but I do a presentation to the commissioners, and I give them how many numbers we do each year, and we do about 350 to 400 case investigations in Beaufort County with our communicable disease nurse, and anybody that can help her do these. This is all before COVID, prior to COVID, so a lot of, a lot of times, they're not really too serious, you know, that we're not worried about, and other times, it might be tuberculosis, porcias, an outbreak at the daycare center, uh, long-term care facility, they have something going on, um, and then, you know, we'll have an occasional foodborne outbreak or something like that. But anyway, it's, it can be intense at times for the communicable disease nurse. So, North Carolina has recognized this as a big problem for a while, because in 2019, they actually put into the budget communicable disease money to go to the health departments, but if y'all remember, 2019 budget was not passed, so it wasn't included there. Uh, but for this year, uh, House Bill 61 came out, and in it, is recognizing again the need for local health departments for expansion to local, uh, infrastructure activities associated with communicable diseases, specifically surveillance, detection, control, and prevention. And so, um, the, the bill is in there, it got passed, it's now been passed by the House and Senate, and is in the current bill that is being negotiated, I guess, with the governor at this point, so we're waiting for it to come back as positive. In that bill, it talks about recurring funding to two local health departments, uh, 18 million, that's going to be divided equally amongst each health department, and 18 million is going to be divided based off of population. Uh, so that means $180,000 for Beaufort County as part of the, uh, the hundred, the cut of 100 of 18 million, and then, uh, with our 1.716 is what it turns out to be per resident, comes up to another $75,500 that we'll be getting when the bill's passed, a total of 255,500, estimates, just an estimate, because I don't know if they're going to use the census data from before this, but they shouldn't be too much different from this. So what, uh, and I was planning on, this is, uh, as Board of Health, you know, we talked about this, uh, almost two years ago, when we first started, uh, seeing this money was going to be coming down, but again, it didn't pass, and I was still waiting for it to be passed, but I do have a couple of stages in this that I'd like to move forward with, and that's why I'm here today to talk to you about this, is I have right now one communicable disease nurse, and she's been getting a lot of help from everybody for this, for the last couple of years, but right now, that's all I have is the one. So what I wanted to do is take my public health nurse, two is my immunization nurse, so she goes out and does all the immunizations, she's been in charge of the COVID vaccine immunizations, so she's been doing a lot of work right now on COVID, and I want to make her a three, then I want to train her to be a communicable disease nurse, so she's going to help, so I'll have two people trained, have the Health Department know how to be a communicable disease nurse. That step one is only going to, uh, be an increase of $3,500 for her, but COVID funding will take care of it, because we have a couple of years of still COVID money that we can put into that, so it won't be any county dollars in there. Uh, then, step two is based off of the, the approval of the state budget. So when it comes, I would activate stage two and hire a nurse, an LPN, which will run me about $137,000, and then, uh, I'm going to take one person that has two really hard jobs and separate them out, and then, then you hire one, take half the job, the other one take the other half of the jobs, and then train them also in communicable disease with the funding that we're getting. Uh, I'm also going to use about $1,500 of operational cost, and what that will do is out of the $255,000, I'll be able to reduce the county dollars that is going towards the one nurse already that I have in place. And then also should be able to return about $10,000 of clinical operations with that funding. So, again, I'm going from the current picture, which is one communicable disease nurse, to four nurses that will be trained in communicable disease, my, uh, my, um, revenue would increase from the state, $255,500, but I'll be able to decrease the county budget portion of my budget by $92,000. Well, see, I think I wanted to say one more thing with that, was that, um, oh, as far as that second stage goes, I'll have to come to y'all for a budget amendment anyway, so y'all get final say on those numbers. I'm just showing you what the numbers will probably be, and I'm really asking for is to approve the step one part, so I can go ahead and move forward with that part.
Questions from any commissioners? I have a comment. All I'm doing is, uh, uh, provided that those jobs exist only as long as the state pays for them.
It, it, it's specifically in there as recurring dollars, um, so I think it's going to be there for a while. I'm pretty sure that the impact of COVID is going to stay in the mind of people for a long time, and they recognize in that bill how the state has not done its part in funding the local communicable disease efforts. I think it's going to be there for a long time, I appreciate what you're saying, I agree with that.
Is there a motion? Do you have a motion? Is there a second? What is the motion? What are we voting on? To allow him? First phase, okay.
Well, yeah, I mean, I can't move forward with the second phase until then, but I'll just let you know that it is a two-phase thing.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your right hand. Good answer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cooperative extension, Rod Greganus.
I close all messages, I don't want to do something wrong. I'm not a good P, I'm a PC person, I'm a PC person, not a Mac person. My technician comes up to get my power, my, uh, video straight, I would like to say, thank you all again for being welcome to let us come and occasionally get a little update on cooperative extension this, I appreciate it. The, um, a few months ago, I was in to make a few comments, my intention was to talk about agriculture that day, and then come back in periodically with updates on our Family Consumer Science Program, as well as our 4H program, but agriculture is the theme of the day right now, harvest season is underway. I want to show a video, and, um, hopefully, I don't know if the, uh, if it's going to be too loud, I'm trying to cut it down. My apologies to Commissioner Walkers, it's not as good as the video that we have produced before, but I'm pretty proud of it, it's a video that we, um, put together to inform and educate the public about, and I was going to show, uh, man. This is not what we wanted to educate the people, I'm going to say that. It's, it's, yeah, yeah, this is something we wanted to put together to educate the public about, um, the importance of agriculture to the county, and we put some tidbits in here, as you can see as it plays, talking mainly about corn and soybean production, harvest season is currently underway, in fact, I probably should say it's almost over with. We have been blessed this year with an unbelievable, unbelievably good harvest season, I mean, this crop has flown out of the field, and, uh, and that's been good. Not only has the crop come out of the field really quickly, but it has, uh, the yields have been really, really good, with the exception of our tobacco crop. Now tobacco got, was negatively impacted by some wet weather, and that, that really seemed to put a dent on, on those guys and their, their yields. But outside of that crop, uh, corn, soybeans, our wheat crop that was harvested in June, and our, um, cotton crop that's come in now is really, really good. Not only though are yields good this year, with the exception of a few dry spots on the south side of the county, we've also had a rare year, and there's a farmer in the room that, if I mention this, you can probably pick him out, because he's going to be smiling about it, because all farmers do, when you get good yields and good prices, that's a rare occasion, and this year, we've actually had that. It's been a phenomenal year, uh, if you see a farmer smiling right now, it's because of what I just mentioned, but he'll quickly turn to a frown on his face, because he starts to think about next year, and next year, the issue is going to be high input prices. They are skyrocketing, fertilizer, pesticides, everything is shooting up sky-high, the, uh, amount of money that these guys are going to have to. Put in. I cannot do two things at one time, I actually surprised myself I did that, uh, but the, the amount of money they're going to have to put in per acre to produce a crop next year is going to be, um, increased by a tremendous amount of money. So, so keep that in mind, but we're definitely going to see positive impacts, I think, as far as this crop coming in, and the money that it's going to put back into our local economy, so be sure and thank a farmer. Also be aware, as I stated on that video, that, uh, harvest season is still underway, and we're trying to encourage people to be careful as they're moving around this equipment that's on the road, this equipment is huge, if a farmer can't see you in the rearview mirrors on these machines, um, he doesn't know you're there, and accidents do happen, so we want to encourage people to be patient as these guys are moving their equipment around. A few things just to finish up, though, uh, talking about the things that we'll be doing in the upcoming years, or upcoming months, uh, and that's going to be an educational output, outreach that we do. We'll be working with growers, educating them, a lot of education this year is going to be, be more efficient, as I mentioned, input prices are skyrocketing, they're looking for ways to be more efficient with less, and so we're going to definitely have some educational opportunities for those topics. Pesticide, uh, recertification is always an issue, we'll be trying to keep them current on, on their, um, pesticide license. Uh, we're also going to work with the tax assessor, Lloyd Salter, this year, to, uh, do a little education on, on property taxes, and some of the things that he has talked about, that he's going to have to do moving forward and educating growers to kind of bring them along. So we find that we get a lot of, of opportunity when we have meetings and bring farmers in, for those meetings, there's a lot of opportunity to bring other things to the table, and so we'll be doing that. One thing I did want to mention, though, and, um, Mr. Madison's, um, presentation reminded me of this, and I should have come probably, uh, to the county manager to tell him, we were recently told, like so many other universities, that, uh, we're now going to be subject to the, um, uh, vaccine mandate because of the federal dollars that are, and, and, and a lot of universities have federal dollars, NC State University has a lot of federal dollars because of the extension component that I represent, there's a lot of federal money involved, and so we're trying to untangle that in the next few months as far as, or next few days. trying to untangle that in the next few months as far as, or next few days and weeks as far as how that's going to impact us, um, either locally or certainly as an institution. And that, that's going to cause some gray hairs. But anyway, those are some things that the extension's doing. Now, next time I come in, we'll talk about 4H and Family Consumer Sciences. Any questions I can answer for you guys? I'd be happy to do so. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Made in Beaufort presentation, Jenny Bowen.
Let me see if I can find my presentation.
Was it 30 seconds?
Okay, I might need some technical assistance. I think you did.
I saw it earlier.
Saw it earlier?
I saw it when it popped up in the screen.
Heard you were giving away your money.
Hey, Mar- Marshall, where'd you land this one?
Get it there. It'll open. How's it not open? Oh, there it is.
Good evening. Sorry for the technical difficulties. Um, my name's Jenny Bowen. I'm with the, uh, Middies Commission, and I'm the Workforce Development Director for the Rivers East Workforce Development Board. Um, a couple of the commissioners actually saw this presentation last week, I believe, with the, um, Economic Development Advisory Group. So, but I wanted to come bring this to you so that you could, uh, see what we've done with Made in Beaufort County. So this initiative is actually, um, was originally funded by the Department of Commerce through a Max Carollana grant. We have five local employers who contributed to building this. Um, and then Beaufort County Schools actually pitched in with some additional funds to create an additional video. Uh, we've had a lot of partners working on this, as you will see in the next slide. Um, so it's been a combination of Beaufort County Schools, Beaufort County Community College, uh, the Workforce Board, NC Works, and we've also brought in ECU so that, as well as these employers. Um, and Martin was a key part in getting all the employers on board as well as developing this framework. So what we're trying to do is promote advanced manufacturing students in schools. Not only is it promoting it to the students, but we also realize that in order to get the students interested in the jobs that are in their backyard, we need to influence the parents and the teachers because they're the influencers over those kids making those decisions. So this actually helps lay out the courses that they could take on any of these on or off ramps, whether it be Beaufort Communities, uh, Beaufort County Schools, the Community College, ECU, or if they just bridge straight from school or as an adult right through NC Works into any of these. Uh, we were able to take all of our industries and actually break them down into four key categories. Uh, so you'll see the, the, um, names of all the different businesses. And the ones that have logos beside them here were the five participating that actually put funds in as we started this project. Uh, so you'll see IDX under woodworking, Iconic under boat building, PAS under plastics, and under welding, we had Camfield and Flanders. Um, but most of the industry is, is listed here. Um, so this is a new initiative called Made in Beaufort County. Um, again, we're starting out with this based on advanced manufacturing and the products that are made as well as the jobs that go with that. So this is one of the other things that we've developed. So we've taken each of those four areas and really tried to pull out, say, the top 10 to 12 jobs that actually go with those areas. And so you notice we're not all talking about, um, just like if you look at the one for boat building, we're not, we're talking about upholstery, assemblers and fabricators, but fiberglass laminators, but we're also talking about the carpenters and the office workers. We've got the, um, logistics and shipping and material handling and those type things included as well. The engineers, everybody who makes it work in manufacturing. And that's such a key part of our economy here. Um, we also have developed these. So there's one roadmap that has all four of those on it with the top jobs. Um, when we advertise those top jobs, we're not only looking at the number of openings that'll be available in the area, we're showing them what the wages might be. And if you notice, when, if you can see these a little bigger, um, some of them actually have little stars beside them, which indicate they'll need to do the community college or an apprenticeship program or ECU or somewhere else to get additional training in order to get these jobs. Um, in addition to that, we've actually also created these banners that we can use as we go to events. Martin can take them to trade shows. Um, I'm sure that he can tell you that one of the key things that an employer asks when they're looking at this area is what's your workforce look like? Initiatives like this make us much more attractive to an industry because they see that we have, that we're working on a grassroots type effort, um, to not only look at the existing workforce, but that pipeline that we're developing through the school systems. I don't know if this will play. This was actually a video, um, from Pete Caldwell with Caldwell Marine Designs. Um, and we actually have five or six of these videos up on the site that will be videos that were shot here in local manufacturing, um, so that they actually can have a few minutes to listen to somebody who actually works in that field to talk about those jobs, what those careers look like. We've also developed a, um, website which will house all the materials as well as all the videos. Um, you see the, the beginnings of that here. We also will have a social media presence that will represent Made in Beaufort County. Um, in addition, so all of these were paid for by that Max Carollana grant. We were able to use this in Made in Beaufort County specifically as an example, um, as one of the Golden Leaf grants that we've recently received. Um, and part of that is not only to build Made in Beaufort County out in five other surrounding counties to duplicate this effort, um, but also to build a Rivers East Academy. I think Trey Goodson with NC East Alliance may have spoken to you about this before. Um, this is a big part of the fundings that we received from Golden Leaf. And again, we're looking at informing teachers and parents as well as students about career options for businesses and jobs that are right here in their backyard. Our Golden Leaf grant is a three-year grant. We've partnered with Beaufort, Bertie, Hurtford, Hightmore, and Pitt. So those are our six key counties. Um, it'll be working with all the high schools and all four of the community colleges. Um, our plan is by the end of that three-year cycle, to train about 200 teachers. Uh, there'll be about 10 teachers per year per county, um, that will be involved. So it'll be a total of about 30 teachers, um, 30 to 60 teachers that will go from each county that will be go through this training. It'll be training from community college faculty, industry experts. We'll also have , um, student ambassadors. So we realized that, again, some of the other things is that kids don't want to hear from us, right? They want to hear from people their age, people who have just been there, done that. Um, so we're also going to have some student ambassador positions that will also go through this to help us from the community college perspective go into the school system and promote those careers. Um, we'll also be developing a marketing toolkit for teachers as well as our student ambassadors to use when they talk to students. Um, and then we're partnering, again, with the community colleges, ECU's REDE program, the College of Engineering and Technology, My Future NC, um, the Society of Manufacturers, SME, and their Tooling U program, as well as Skills USA. So there's a lot going on around this effort. This is just, um, the tip. And again, Made in Beaufort County is our first in the six counties, so we're excited about that. And we also want to invite you to a ribbon cutting we'll be doing to launch Made in Beaufort County with all the materials, videos. Um, that'll be next week on Tuesday at 1:00 downtown at the Chamber.
I really don't have a lot, but I'd just like to, uh, thank Jenny and Rivers East from really, um, filling out an idea we had about Made in Beaufort County. A lot of people did not know what was made here, what the jobs were, and what was the pay. So as you see, this has been an incredible effort on the part of Rivers East and brought a lot of knowledge and technology such as websites to this effort. And I was just going to hand out a copy of some of the manufacturers that are in Beaufort County.
And when you look, and there's an extensive list, you'll see a few manufacturers we were not able to include in kind of our overall grouping. And I'll give you an example. Nutrien is not really, doesn't really fit into any of those four categories, even though they're our largest, one of our largest employers. However, they fit into so many of those categories when you actually look at the jobs. Um, so we're, that's how we'll continue to promote them, even if they're not specifically listed. Any questions?
Questions from any commissioners? Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Soul and Waters, Ann Williams.
Good evening, commissioners. And with me tonight is the district's chairman, Mr. James Allen, and the district's, uh, resource conservation specialist, Anthony Ward, if you have any questions afterwards. The Soul and Water District has two agenda items before you tonight. The first is a budget amendment. On November the 19th and 20th, the Beaufort Soul and Water District is assisting Southside High School with the 2021 FFA land judging competition. Expense items that the district will be responsible for will be paid through the district's 2022 operating budget. Beaufort County will be reimbursed for all payments made through monetary contributions from the North Carolina Association of Soul and Water Conservation Districts, Beaufort County Farm Bureau, and the Soul Science Society of North Carolina. The district's Board of Supervisors recommends the approval of the budget amendment to manage funds associated with the land judging competition.
Have a motion. Is there a second? I'll second. Discussion.
I have a question. Did I understand that we're going to get refunded this money?
Yes, sir, 100%.
No, if we're going to be refunded the money, I
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, unanimous?
Thank you. The second item is a purchase order for an expenditure above $30,000. Phase two of the district's stream debris removal project through the 2020 watershed restoration project is ready for startup. Through the formal bid process, five bids were received to complete the work. The three lowest bids, along with other information, were reviewed and discussed during a meeting of the district's Board of Supervisors on September the 27th. J&amp;J Environmental was approved by the district's board to complete the phase two work. This project is 100% funded through a state grant with no match required from Beaufort County. The Beaufort Soul and Water Conservation District's Board of Supervisors recommend the approval of the purchase order that you have in front of you tonight to complete work under phase two of their stream debris removal project.
I have some questions.
Commissioner Richon?
Well, you know, I'm looking at the tabulation here, and it says that J&amp;J Environmental is not the low bidder.
That's correct.
But I'm also looking at the tabulation, and I see that everybody is rated, who bid is rated at the same. There is no fly spec on the, the company that got, that put in the low bid price. So why are we bidding things if we're not going to bid to the lowest qualified bidder?
Are you referring to the X's in those columns?
Yeah.
That just means that those items were submitted in the bid.
All right. Why did you not award this to the lowest qualified bidder, to the lowest bidder?
Would you like to address that?
You want me to back that? I'll be there. Um, as far as the references went, uh, I'm
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Is this, is this the winner of the bid?
No, no.
Oh, okay. He handled the bidding.
He handled the bidding process.
He's your employee?
Right.
Okay.
And he contacted all the references.
And it wasn't that
And Mr. Price did not receive a bad reference per se. He, I was assured that he would get the job done. It was when I contacted J&amp;J's references, every single one of them, he's the best, absolute best. Can't wait to work with him again. It wasn't where there was a bad reference. It was just the quality of J&amp;J's references were much higher.
Well, but that doesn't quite seem to fit with me on awarding bids. Uh, you, he had good, everybody had good references. So what you're saying is that we can award bids based on the quality of the reference that we get?
I'm not qualified to say that. Um,
Well, then why did you award this to somebody other than the lowest bidder?
The board did. I didn't award it to anybody. I'm just an employee.
I have a serious problem when I see that everybody's rated that close to the same. I've done, I've taken care of, I've done a few bids myself, and I've bid on a few things myself.
Yes, sir.
So what you're giving for an excuse is not a good excuse.
I had to give an excuse.
Ever, ever, yes, you did. What did you do? What are you doing here?
I took the references and to my board. They looked at it, and they reviewed them, and they chose the
Didn't you say, didn't you say that the references for, uh, the low bidder were not as good as the references for the person that
They all said they weren't negative, but they weren't as
Well, wait a minute. You have to take a position on this. Either the references were acceptable or they weren't.
I just said they weren't as good.
No, that, I, I, I have a serious problem based on what you're telling me with awarding this to anybody but the low bidder because you haven't told me he has bad references. You haven't told me he failed to perform on a contract.
Commissioner Richon, I, I think
I'm just an employee.
Hold on, hold on, sir. Hold on. I, I think you're putting him in a, in a bad spot. He, he, he is not in the decision-making process.
I didn't make a decision.
He just, he just handed on the information. So you, I, I, I think your question should be directed to those who are in charge.
Well, the chairman of the board should step up and answer why. What's the difference in the references?
We were more satisfied with J&amp;J's references than we were the low bidder. And we had a unanimous decision to choose J&amp;J.
Well, what was the difference in the references that one was better than the other?
Our references stated that the low bidder had to be watched closely.
But the, his references said that about him?
Said that about him. He said he would get the job done, but he need, would have to be watched closely. That was the references that we got.
In other words, he would require exceptional supervision.
Right. And we don't have the labor to do it.
Okay, fine. That's the reason. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner? Commissioner Redd votes?
You were here during the public comment period, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can you respond to Blackwater?
Just as I just stated, that, uh, the low bidder would require more supervision than we had labor to provide. And word, J&amp;J's references were excellent. These, the people we interviewed or contacted had some reservations. And that's, and because we had an excellent reservation, I mean, uh, recommendations for J&amp;J, we, I chose J&amp;J. We've had experience with another contractor that we had, we had to send him back to redo some work several times, and we just didn't want to go through that again.
Is, is there a motion from?
Well, if, let me ask one more question. If we had that $22,000 that we're giving away that's left on the table, wouldn't we be able to provide some additional supervision and so, and, and to, uh, and to, uh, do more work for the county?
I guess you would say that, but, uh, I don't know how we could do it. This money is all coming from the state. And, uh, so I understand where you're coming from, but we just couldn't, we, as a board, we could not, uh, go through what we've been through with another contractor.
But were people invited to bid, were companies invited to bid? But were people invited to bid, were companies invited to bid, or was this a public opening where anybody that wanted to can walk in to bid?
It was advertised in the newspaper and to people that we knew.
So I understand that this person was invited. He said back there, he was invited to bid. So why is he on your bid list if you're not going to award him a bid?
May I say something?
You said the name.
We went through the formal bid process from Beaufort County, and a request for proposal was issued, and that's where we got bidder responses from.
So you're saying no one was invited to bid?
The request...
Pardon?
Every qualified bidder was invited to bid. It was advertised publicly.
Anything else?
Is there a motion?
I move that we make the award to the lowest bidder.
That is, that, that is not what is before us.
Yes, it is. I'm not a rubber stamp. That's what you're saying, what's before us is a rubber stamp, and I'm not a rubber stamp.
Commissioner Booth.
May I ask Ms. Francisco a question?
Oh, oh. Commissioner Booth.
Your board is elected by the people, aren't they?
We have three elected and two appointed.
And all of them voted?
In favor of the J&amp;J.
Thank you.
And you, you want to ask the attorney?
Mr. Francisco, we are a separate entity in the county, an elected board. Can you explain to the commissioners how we work?
Well, that's, that's correct. This is, the board of county commissioners is not an appellate board for your board. Your board is your board, and what they decide to do is, is their business, and that's, that's what the general statute says.
Then what, then what's our role in all this? What do we do?
You partially fund them, I understand. Well, it's, it's a, it's a money sort of thing, but, but they're not the, I'm sorry. Right, right. But that's your connection. It's partially funded by the county.
But in this particular case, there is no county funding.
They decide who's going to do what, and that's what...
So why do we get into the debate?
Why are we here?
Why am I even signing the bids?
The money has come through the county. It comes through the state, and...
I can tell you why it comes through the county. It comes through the county because if the board fails to perform, and the state decides that the work wasn't done properly and it shouldn't have been paid, do you know who makes up the money? It's the board of county commissioners. It's the taxpayers of Beaufort County. So I, the question is not a rhetorical question. What are we doing here? We have the final authority on this, because we have the money. That's why the state sent the money to the county commissioners to make sure that it was done properly and that the lowest bidder received the bids.
Okay, let's, let's do this. You, you put a motion out here.
Wait a minute, there's a motion up now.
If you would listen to me, you'd, you'd understand what I'm saying. I said that you put a motion out here, and did you get a second?
Yeah.
So we will vote on, we will vote on, we will vote on your motion, and then we will proceed. All in favor of Commissioner, Commissioner Richardson's motion to accept the lowest bid, raise your right hand. All those oppose. Four to. Three to. I'm still, I'm still stuck.
The actual thing tonight is you're voting on the budget amendment, not who they're choosing, and that's what I need to vote on.
Okay, thank you.
We're asking for a vote on a purchase order to proceed with the work.
Thank you. Thank you for the correction, so...
Motion to approve.
All right. Have a motion, there a second? I'll second.
I have some comments.
Commissioner Richardson.
You know, I talk to a lot of people in Beaufort County, and a lot of people tell me the same thing. Now, all the stuff that's bid in Beaufort County is awarded to the lowest qualified bidder. There's several really good examples of this that I'm not going to go into right now. If this county wants, if this county wants the appearance of doing business in an honest way, we need to do business in an honest way, and we're not doing it, and I'm not going to vote for this.
Any other commissioner?
The only thing we're voting on is the budget amendment. We're not vote, we're not voting on the contract.
We're voting on the purchaser.
Purchaser, yes. We're not voting on...
Who got it?
The bid. All right. We, you could restructure, if this is a concern for you, we could restructure the motion to not exceed a certain amount, and that would go to the lowest bidder by that amount. I mean, it is a money thing.
It's not a concern to me.
I know, but it is to us.
Well, you, you make the motion in. You can't them have to vote because you got a concern.
I'm just mentioning that you can look at it that way. We have a motion, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion on the table to...
Now, most, yeah, excuse me, go ahead.
To approve the budget amendment, the purchase order. Raise your right hand. Those oppose. No action, we have to wait till your next meeting, when there'll be seven of us.
Thank you.
Commissioner Richardson, the item for, you pulled from the consent agenda?
Yes. I, this particular... This particular item, let me get over here to the right page, purchase order, page eight. This particular item is to buy 80 radios. The sum of the expenditure is $191,000, and I guess I'm a little bit lost on this radio thing, because I've sat in here plenty of times. Are these Viper radios?
Yes, and it's 40 is the quantity.
How many?
Forty.
It's not what this purchase order says. Yeah, it does. It says 40. Forty, $2,000 apiece. Okay, but these are Viper radios.
Correct.
The life of these radios is expected to be what?
Really don't know. The reason that we're looking to move with these radios is not because of the radios themselves, it's because the life of the radios that we've had for a dozen years has been at their end of life since December of 2019. Now, they are still functioning, but we are told by Motorola and told, you know, that their serviceable life is over, and if the Viper radio network ever has to be narrow-banded again, or touched again, or reprogrammed again, then that would mean that every radio that we would have would be obsolete at the snap of a finger. So in, you know, just a brief summary, you know, we, we've actually talked about the radios over the last couple of years in the budget. There was a discussion over this in one of the budget workshops. The funds were originally in the capital under vehicles. There was a discussion about how difficult it was to get vehicles at a time which the vehicles that we ordered in October of 2020, we're just receiving within the last month. So I, I gave to the commissioners that, you know, it is uncertain on the vehicle future what sort of availability we would have, so I asked at that time for the board to entertain the, the opportunity to switch those capital funding to the radios instead of vehicles, since we knew that that was in front of us, and I was asking for us to take care of more than just piecemealing that over a couple of years, and that was approved.
Well, what, what is the warranty on these? How long are they going to warrant them for?
With the Motorola radios, the warranties, you get an initial package which is covered, and I'll be honest, a lot of the stuff in the purchase order is sort of golly good when you get it. You got to sort of dig into it. But there's, there's maintenance and warranty that goes along with the package that we have, and then as long as the, the serviceable life of the radio is existing, then we still get maintenance and warranty on those that we can either just, like the calls that I get on my phone all the time, if something comes up and we're getting to 10, 12 years from now, then we can purchase recurring maintenance, as long as those radios have serviceable life. I hope that, that makes a lot of sense.
So unless they make changes in the signal, which is not made by us, made by the government or Motorola or whoever, we would expect these radios to last 10 years?
Hopefully. I mean, the radios that we have now have lasted over a dozen years, and just on that, we, you know, we were fortunate enough at that point that we were able to purchase those radios, because at that time, we could use 911 funds to make that purchase. But we don't have that availability anymore through the 911 board, so we were looking over the last handful of years to sort of piecemeal by five, 10 radios at a time. Until we could do that, we've got, I think, 12 radios at this point. This would get us to the point that all full-time law enforcement officers are covered, and then we're still going to look to probably buy another five or 10 over the next couple of years, just to get it to the point that we will have a couple of extras, and that our part-timers can have radios without us having to rob Peter to pay Paul.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve this item. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. Registered Deeds Office, Jennifer Wanthurst.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm here tonight to, once again, bring up the fact that the Registered Deeds Office is running out of space and ask for your help to help me determine what direction we need to go in. Right now, the only place I have to go is up, and I can't put books any higher than they are in the vault. I don't know if we need to form a committee to look at available resources around us to, to rehouse the Registered Deeds Office. A lot of offices across the state are outside the courthouse, and that seems to work well. So I'm here for help and suggestions.
Any commissioner?
One of the things that we're doing with the jail committee is looking at the opportunity to use existing space, which includes the lower level, as a most, one of the more efficient ways of expanding the jail itself. With that, the thought process from the architect would be to use both your space downstairs and the clerk of the court's space downstairs. The logical procession from that would be to move you out and put the clerk's, the court's, of the court's stuff into your existing facility. So I think that's in the works. There are some other things that are, that we're talking about that sort of go along with that. I think we can incorporate what you're looking for into the jail committee, because that would be part of that, that plan if it moves forward that way.
I want to back up a little bit. I probably should have started with this. Currently, we are filling a real estate book. We run about three and about four books a month. I have 60 slots to put books in right now, and by the end of this fiscal year, I will have used half of those, and I'll only have 30 more. So it's something that we need to consider and consider it quickly, because it's not getting any better. Even our work area behind the counter is becoming congested. It's sort of difficult to be doing a marriage license at one workstation, talking to someone about their deceased loved one's death certificate at another station, and then have someone on the telephone trying to navigate someone on the website, to do all of those things at one time, and then number of papers at the same time. It's just kind of noisy and it's hard to concentrate. So we've outgrown that space, and we need to act quickly. So I'm all for being moved out of the courthouse, but I don't want us to drag our feet. I think we need to just go ahead and start working towards finding us another place.
Well, we're, so are we talking, just talking, is what we're doing?
Well, we're talking a lot. Every time I talk here, we talk about this.
We're talking about a freestanding building, which really should be in short walking distance to the courthouse. So there are not many opportunities presently for parcels. I can think of one, but I don't want to say it, that could, we could use for something like this. Using an existing building is difficult in your case because of the fire protection aspect of it. So we really need to, we really need to do something with this.
Yeah, we need, we need to think, think it out and do it right. We don't want to just, just grab some space and put us in there. We want it to be right. We want to be able to grow and serve the people of Beaufort County without having to yell over someone else while we're trying to assist them, and to give them a nice place to come and visit and look at their public records and use those records.
Would you be willing to come to the next jail committee meeting?
I would be, yes.
Okay, okay, because we will, we at that point in time should be starting to put more pen to paper in terms of plans.
Just let me know when that meeting is, and I would like to be there.
How often does the jail committee meet?
It, it was meeting monthly, but we've postponed some because we, because of the COVID, and we couldn't get the, we're at the point where the feds need to come in and give us what their view of what we ought to be doing in terms of that. So we're waiting on them right now, okay? But that'll better be sooner than later.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Chris Handelis, Purchase.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak for you today. As you know, this, this fiscal year included capital outlay funding for the purchase of a new ambulance. And several weeks ago, Beaufort County Emergency Services put out that request for bid and received bids back from three different vendors, First Class Emergency Vehicles, Select Custom Apparatus, and CW Williams. Chief Hibbert and I wanted to take an opportunity with you tonight to kind of review the comparison of those bids and seek your approval to proceed forward with the purchase of that, of the new ambulance. So I want to start on kind of recapping how we came up with the specification of what we included in our bids for an ambulance. As we sat down and started putting in, in writing what we wanted out of an ambulance, safety of our providers and safety of the patients was our number-one priority. Our trucks spend a lot of time on the road. This particular truck, when purchased, is slated to go to the Bellhaven Station. That truck ran last year about 16,000 miles, what we would consider loaded patient, loaded patient miles, meaning 16,000 miles with a patient and a provider in the back. Now, when you look at that mileage, you say 16,000, some people may look at that as a lot, some people may say that's not much at all. The true travel time of that truck was more around 36,000 miles a year. So only about half the time that our trucks are on the road are actually loaded patient miles, because time from the station to the home and time from the hospital back to the station is not coming into play on that. So our trucks are on the road a lot, and while we have a patient and a provider in the back, we're trying to keep their safety and things that we can put in the truck to ensure everybody's safe while they're in that environment. Kind of give you an example. As you all know, we have cardiac monitors on our trucks. We use those cardiac monitors on just about every call. That monitor weighs about 10 pounds, costs about $25,000. Right now, in the back of our ambulances, that is sitting on workspace. So you can imagine what that monitor would look like if it's ever been in an accident. It becomes a 10-pound projectile in the back of our vehicle, and then what are we subjecting our patients and providers to? As we look at the specs for this particular build, we have safety things like that in mind when we look at the layout and what we want to see in an ambulance, what we would like to see in there. So real quickly, we'll run through the kind of different criteria of how we evaluated these. The top category there that you see, specifics, when you're looking at the chassis of a truck, a chassis is a chassis is a chassis, right? We can all get into debating which is better, a Ford or a Chevrolet or a Dodge. That's where a lot of these come into play. The biggest pieces for us on that was the year model. We wanted to ensure that it was a Type 1, meaning a truck-style chassis, because of the, the maintenance and less labor when it comes to replacing and doing engine work. So those are all pretty much, pretty comparable, or comparable on that. As we step down to the warranty, you start to see some differences, and a lot of that is, it varies from manufacturer to manufacturer in what they cover. So for example, the structural warranty, the box itself. CW Williams has a lifetime warranty on all components. That warranty is transferable, so as many of... That warranty is transferable, so as many of you know, we typically like to remount our boxes. Well, we'll put it on a truck and chassis, we'll run the miles on it, we'll refurb it, put it on another chassis, cut the cost down on the next new ambulance instead of buying this grade of ambulance each time. C.W. Williams has a lifetime warranty. We have some manufacturers like Select that have a 15-year on everything. First Class has a lifetime warranty, but only on the aluminum components. So a lot of the workspaces, the cabinetry, things like that are not aluminum. It's wood, and that would fall under a 12-month warranty. So you see some comparisons or differences along that lines. Probably one of the biggest warranty items that we've run into in the past is the electrical warranty. As these trucks are running up and down the road, vibrating wires through chases, rubbing together, we develop shorts, lighting issues. That has come up on several units in the past, and so you see some degree of the warranties on that as well. As you look through these bids in each category, green would be the best of that category. Red would be the worst. If they're all green, it's all equal, and anything that's not highlighted fell somewhere in the middle. As we get into the next section, would be the options section. A lot of these are, some of them are safety components. When we start looking at things like the, like the techno mounts, those are the devices that secure our stretchers in the back of the truck, that secure our monitors in place. We have some things that we've implemented just through different DEA requirements and chain of custody, like a narcotics safety. We're required to adhere to certain, certain standards from that licenser. All of those pretty much fell in line with the specs on those particular categories. As we start looking under options, under liquids, liquid spring suspension and aluminum wheels, some, some people may look at that and say, well, that's a, that's a, that's a add-on, something that we don't particularly need. What we know is that these two items for, for a low cost upfront save us immensely in PM work later on down the road. Our current trucks have steel wheels, traditional suspension. We're rebuilding the front ends of them about every 12,000 miles. These liquid field cuts down on suspension repairs. The aluminum wheels dissipate heat better, so brakes tend to go longer. Everybody that we have searched out in helping with building these specs and trying to get information from have all steered us in that direction. You need to do this upfront. It'll save you down the road on maintenance. Delivery times, you do see some variance in those. A lot of the shorter delivery times are companies that have the chassis on hand. I'm sure everybody's aware of the supply and demand of vehicles. So the companies that have the chassis on hand can turn it quicker. The ones that can't have a longer, longer time on that. We specifically broke out the safety and design of the box layout. We had, actually in this case, the lowest bid being First Class was the furthest away from those bid designs and safety aspects that we would like to see in the back of the truck. All the others were pretty close in line with, with meeting all of those, those specifications in the bid pack. When we look at just the design of the truck, and a lot of people say, well, the ambulance is an ambulance, right? It doesn't matter where you sit in the back. It does when you're trying to take into account your provider being in a, in a seat belt during transport and still being able to administer care. If you've seen any TV shows or Chicago Fire or anything like that, when you look in the back of the ambulance, you've got the patient who's sitting on the stretcher looking out the back door, and then sitting behind that patient is the provider. And that's typically been the case in EMS. That's where the provider typically sat is behind the patient during a transport. We have extended transport times, and there's still care that we have to provide during that transport. So we need our providers to be able to sit next to the patient, to be able to reach them, to touch them. More importantly, to reach the equipment in the truck that they may need to use to provide that patient care. So when we start looking at the safety aspects of the truck itself, that's where you see these differences. Some trucks are set up in the cabinetry and the seating positions and the restraints allow providers to do that. Other trucks do not. So as we, we look through the rest, we had some, some vendors that included graphics, some did not. Some, we identified different locations for our oxygen tubing to connect. Some included it, some did not. So you do start to see some separation between the three bids that we received on that. As we evaluated it in totality, First Class was the cheapest bid. Their, their bid as submitted was $229,000. That did not include graphics on the side of the truck. That did not include a narcotics safe that's compatible with our software that we put in the bid specification. It also did not meet a lot of the safety, safety specifications that we wanted to see in the back of the trucks. C.W. Williams was the highest at 269. Again, they were some deficient on some things. Refrigerator, narcotics safe were not included in theirs. Select Customs was the best middle ground of those two. They weren't the cheapest. They didn't meet every specification that we had, but they met pretty much all the safety specifications that we put in it, with the exception of a storage drawer that IV needles, syringes, and things like that were included. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have between Jeff and Our recommendation is to proceed with the Select Custom F-550 for 248, 277.
I have some questions.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Richardson.
Let's see. We're talking about, when we say ambulance, we're talking about buying the truck and the box, both.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. You're rebuilding front ends every 12,000 miles?
Yes, sir.
You have a misdesigned, misspec'd piece of junk to begin with.
So the, in the past, we have bought the ambulance with the van-style front end. It's an F-450 ambulance with a van-style front end. By the time you get that truck with the box on it and loaded with equipment, we are at the max load rating of that truck. So we're already bumping the max capacity of that truck.
Well, why are you doing that?
That was before us, sir.
Why are you doing that? Well, what are you doing now?
That's what we're trying to correct.
How much is the capacity of the truck you're buying now compared to the load?
Right now, our load is approximately anywhere from 12,000 to 13,000 pounds. The load rating on the new truck we're going to get is 19,000 pounds, whereas the old truck is roughly 11,500 pounds gross vehicle weight.
Why can't you buy a heavier-rated truck front end?
That's what we're doing now, sir.
No, no, heavier than the 19,000.
But that's, you're looking at Freightliners, and you're looking at about a half a billion-dollar truck right now.
Yeah, but that half a billion-dollar truck has a front end that's rebuildable, and you're not going to have to rebuild it if you're ever 12,000 miles.
The other thing is there is a threshold because we are utilizing other stations about the size of a truck that we can fit into our existing stations. So that does limit us on the size of the truck that we can, that we can spec. If we went with something like the International chassis that has that much heavier front end on it, it wouldn't fit in the stations that we currently occupy. Some of them.
Was it too wide?
Some may be too tall, some may be too long. So for example, in the Bellhaven Station, which is--
You can bobtail a chassis.
Those, those are adding on cost to, you certainly can. Those would add on a substantial cost to the truck.
Well, I don't understand why we're buying something we could keep maintaining, keep having high maintenance costs on. That's what you're telling us that we've been doing is buying things with high maintenance. I've wondered about this.
So that's, that's what we're trying to be better prepared for, is to have a truck that's more--
Why do you need, why do you need a new ambulance? Let me ask you that.
The one we currently have, the one this is replacing is a 2012 with almost 200,000 miles on it, and the transmission and drivetrain need serious repair at the moment.
Is it an automatic transmission?
Yes, sir. It's a Duramax with an Alice.
I just think that we're misspecing these trucks. I think you're better off to buy something that's a little more expensive, that will last longer and give you better service than what you're buying. There's a, there's a lot of different, I happen to have bought a few trucks in my day, so I do know what I'm talking about.
And, and when we, when we look at our, when we look at our old trucks, I did want to make a point, I told you those were purchased prior to our time. They were also purchased according to the requirements they were required to carry at the time. So EMS, OEMs has changed supplies, our equipment weights have changed, the amount of equipment we're putting on the truck has changed in 2012. This truck may not have been at the capacity that it is now. But now with the items that we have to carry, it is, and it's become an operational problem for us.
What if, what if you rebuilt what you have?
We, we are unaware of a way that we'd meet, that, we are unaware of a way to make a 450 van-style chassis and replace the suspension in a way that would dissolve us of the liability of those aftermarket repairs. So could, could someone do it?
You can't buy repair parts for people? There aren't people that rehab these things?
Yes, sir. And we've been doing it about every 12,000 miles.
No, I mean the whole ambulance. Why, why not refurbish the whole ambulance?
I'm not exactly following--
But you're saying you're going to have to continue to rebuild a front end every 12,000 miles?
No, no, sir, not with this new truck. That's the reason. There are old trucks or Type 3 ambulances with a van-style chassis. This new ambulance we're buying is a Type 1 sitting on a truck chassis that's independent from the box.
To answer your question, these, these specs, taking account the issues that you're mentioning and, and putting some things in place, that from all of our research and talking with other agencies who were using them, have minimized those repairs because they included these items in the specs.
Have you had people, like the reps that sell the chassis, to come and talk to you?
We, we have, and, and we have also--
I'm not talking about the local salesman. I'm talking about the factory rep.
Yes, sir.
And we have also reached out to other users of fleet vehicle in our county beyond this ambulance. So Mr. Boyd, I spoke to him quite extensively about the PM. He uses a lot of the Ford chassis, everything from F-250 to F-550, which we are specing. And I've talked a lot to him in comparing gas versus diesel, PM cost, part cost, availability. He was very insightful on giving us some information. So we have, we have made an effort to try to get as much information as we can, and we, we are just in, in, being full disclosure, we're kind of hesitant on taking word of mouth just from the salesman, as I'm sure you all agree.
Well, you don't talk to the salesman for something like this. You talk to the factory rep.
Yes, sir. So we have thought, we've, we've taken advantage of multiple outlets to gain that information. Yes, sir.
Factory reps, not salesmen.
You're not going to get a factory rep.
You can call them and talk to them. They'll talk to you.
Yes, sir. I've called, I've called and talked to Wheel Coach. Actually, on the truck itself, we actually talked to Ford Motor Company about the fluids. The biggest thing we want to know is advantageous of the fluid spring suspension underneath it, how well that will save us maintenance on that truck. And they were real good to work with us, emailed us back and forth. Then we went to Wheel Coach. Wheel Coach representatives had talked with us, answered questions for us. Medics had offered, they offered to fly us out to their production plant to even look at and talk with the reps in person. We didn't feel like it's necessary for us to go out there and look, but in our bid specification, there was a lot of parameters we, that we collected from these representatives and added to our bid specification to make sure we get something that's safe for our people and for the patients we're carrying.
I have a problem with buying something that, that puts 200,000 miles on it and needs to be thrown in the junk pile. That shows we didn't buy the right thing to begin with. We need to buy something that when it needs, that you're coming in here ever so often and saying, it's time to rebuild this ambulance, not throw it in the junk pile and buy another one.
And that, that was including in our considerations of the bid specs. And one of the things that we asked for was a lifetime warranty on the box itself. Because the box does, when we talk about rebuilding a truck, one of the easiest and most feasible way to do that is take the box off and put it on a new chassis. So when you start rebuilding a chassis that's got 200,000 miles on it, there is a point in which it's just better stewardship of our money to say, put a new chassis under it. That's one of the reasons why we specifically asked for the lifetime warranties on a lot of these components, so that we would be in a better position that when this chassis hits 200,000 miles, we can take the box off, put it on another chassis, and continue to use the truck.
No, that's not the right answer. The right answer is when it hits 200,000 miles, we rebuild the chassis. It's not that expensive.
But those are prices that I, that I am not familiar with.
Well, I mean, I can think of the parts. All you need is some bushings and some springs. There's not that much to it. I mean, we're looking at this from the standpoint of we're buying a disposable item, and I don't think I won't spend the county's money to buy a disposable item. Because I know the equipment business well enough to know that when you get into the heavies like this, you rebuild them. You don't go buy new.
Commissioner Rebo.
First of all, let me commend you for the fine work you did here in putting this together. There, pardon?
I said it right. Go ahead.
This, you're specing this out at 19 gross vehicle weight, GBW?
Yes, sir.
And your current is 11.5?
Yes.
So we got an 80% increase in the capability of this truck--
From what we have.
--from what we got right now that's falling apart. Okay? So that solves that problem going forward. Having been in this business, I can tell you that you've done, you've done some great work here in putting this together, and I fully support this.
You want to make a motion? Commissioner Walker.
What will happen to the truck this is replacing? It'll just be sold for salvage?
Yes, sir. Plus, I--
What do you think kind of money will you get from that?
That's hard to say in this market.
Yeah.
It's really hard to say in this market. I'm not sure, Jeff, that you have any in your research.
No.
You want to make a motion?
I'd like to say too that you just didn't obviously throw a dart at the dartboard. You studied on this thing.
Yes, sir. Very, very much. We've been studying almost a year. We actually started with a steering committee of putting together the people that work on the truck, their needs and stuff. And then we looked at the safety aspect. We've been doing almost a year to get this bid specification. Once we finalize and get this, this is going to be our bid specification from now on.
I think you identified your shortcomings and you've addressed them.
Yes, sir.
And I seen a problem with it.
We make a motion that we approve the recommendation to purchase the ambulance from Select.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
One second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Four to, it passes.
Thank you, sir.
At this time, we're 15 minutes behind. We'll take our break from 7:15 to 7:30. At this time, we will have our finance officer, Ms. Anita.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioners. You have a packet in front of you with a bit of financial information that I'm going to review very quickly this evening. The first item you have on top there is a TR401 net collections report. I believe you saw this for the first time last month. This is the report that comes out of Farragut. It was run as of today, and it shows you the 2021 tax levy information. You can see there, we have a net levy that's been billed of the $34.949 million. As of today, 6.243 million of that levy has been collected, or 17.87%, leaving us with an uncollected balance of 28.7 million. And so I went back and looked at the last year's levy, or the 2020 levy at this point in time last year, and we were at 16.8% collection. So we're a whole 1% ahead of where we were this time last year with collections. So kudos to the tax collector and his folks for working hard to get those tax dollars in as early as possible. And then at the bottom left, I'm just showing, demonstrating there what I'm expecting, the difference between where we're going to end up with the collections versus what we have budgeted. And so I'm estimating with our collection rate, it's historically been a little better than 98%. That will collect about 34.3 million. We've budgeted 33.750. So I am expecting we'll have a bit of a surplus around 576,000 for the tax levy.
What you're budgeting, what you're looking under last month? We're going to be less than budgeted?
I think that, yes, I do believe.
Yeah, you--
Things have changed. Oh, things can change a month. Got better and improved. That's why it's just an estimate. It's a budget, so we just look at it, you know, from month to month. Moving right along on sales tax, the next sheet there. We did receive information today from the association about our August sales, which will be distributed the 15th of this month. And you can see it highlighted there in yellow in that top left table. And you can see it highlighted there in yellow in that top-left table. This is the sixth straight month that we've received over $1 million in sales tax, you know, which is quite impressive, I think. The statewide growth for this month was 20% over the same period last year, and you can see we were up 14%. So, we did lag behind the state just a little bit this month in the growth, but still, 14% growth year-over-year in sales tax distribution is kinda unbelievable. But that's what we were last year. If you look at where we finished up last year compared to the year before, it was 14%. And where we're trending this year is the same, 14% up. So, if you look over to the right, that small box there, again, I try to look at what, you know, it's trending at, or rolling at, or annualizing at compared to what we budgeted. And you can see it's annualizing at 12.6 million. We budgeted 10.6. So, if it keeps going like it is and we keep getting million-dollar distributions, we're probably gonna have a large surplus in sales tax. But then again, it's, I don't know yet. I'm trying to look into the future and try to anticipate what might happen, but I really don't know what's gonna happen. So, we just have to kinda take it month-to-month and see where we end up. Any questions on sales tax here? The next page, that's the remaining general fund revenues there. You've got your restricted DSS health revenues, state and federal revenues, your sales and services, investment earnings. Nothing spectacular there to point out. The thing I did want to mention here is, so we're four months into the fiscal year, July through October 31st, and we've collected $11.1 million in revenue. Well, if you go back a couple more pages and you look at the expenditure side, two more pages over, we've spent year-to-date 19.353 million. So, that's when we talk about, you know, one of the important reasons to have a healthy fund balance is because there is a gap during the beginning of the fiscal year where your expenditures are going to exceed your revenues until all those tax dollars come in. And this, I think this demonstrates that really well. We've got an 8.2 million-dollar gap right now between our revenue and expenditures that our fund balancing is supporting until we can get those tax revenues in in November and December. So, moving right along, you know, the last few pages are the water and the solid waste, our enterprise funds, and again, nothing that I really need to point out there. They're exactly where I would expect them to be. You can see water fund is at 25.2% collected on the revenues, and ironically, 25.2% expended on their expenditure side. And then, for solid waste, about 22% on the revenues. Again, these revenues are mostly the annual solid waste fee. That is a fee, not a tax, however it is billed on the tax bill, just to improve the collectability of that. And so, we expect most of that revenue to come in in the next couple of months. And on the expenditure side, that 86% is way out of whack because we issued our purchase order to Republic for the entire year, but actual expenditures are at 23.5% for the year on solid waste. Any questions on the financial report for this month? Yes, sorry?
On the revenue side, under the restricted, the state, DSS, health, other, and on the federal side, one would, is there a reason that they lag what you would expect? It's, we're a third of the year through.
Right.
So, 33%, and these are down in the teens.
They do lag. I know DSS does what they call a 1571 report, and that's where they have to say, "Get in all the October expenditures," and they don't file that report until like the end of November. And then you wait for the state to review that and analyze that and then distribute. It's much like the sales tax. That's three months behind. I don't think the lag is quite that great, but it's a similar type thing.
Anyone else have any questions? Any kind?
Okay. Thank you. Next item we have is, I thought it would be prudent tonight to just kinda do a brief review of the ARP funds. We have taken some action and done some votes at the last couple of meetings, and I felt like we needed to kinda put things down on paper so we can see what projects we've identified, or you've identified and designated as using the ARP funds to pay for. And then also, I wanted you to ratify your actions on those capital project funds to be able to pay for those projects. So, on page 130, just to review the information here, we received $9.11 million in American Rescue Plan funding. We have actually, well, we've received half of that back in May of 2021. We're expected to receive the remaining 50% before May of 2022. So, but we have a budgeted for the full 9.110 million. That money had to be put in a special revenue fund, and it's sitting there in an interest-bearing account in a separate fund in our accounting system. You all came along the last couple of months and designated three general fund projects that you wanted to use ARP funding to pay for, and they are the jail architect fees totaling $12,000, broadband in the amount of $4 million, and a multipurpose building at a cost of $1.5 million. So, if you turn to page 139, I just want to show you where we have put together a capital project ordinance totaling 5.512 million to pay for those three projects there. So, what we're doing is we're taking 5.512 million out of that special revenue fund. We're transferring that money to a general fund capital project fund to pay for those three projects. In the same manner, you designated six water projects to use ARP funds to pay for, and that is on page 137. So, those total, and let's just review those right quick so we'll make sure we're all on the same page. There's a SCADA system replacement at an estimated cost of $700,000. We're doing a water line extension to Swan Point Mobile Home Park for $187,000, four elevated storage tank mixers for $112,000, directional drills on Highway 99, $285,000. And then, we're doing various line upgrades and flushing, $250,000, and then the railroad crossing water line issue, $75,000. So, those projects total $1,609,000. And you can see on page 137, again, we're moving $1.609 million out of a special project fund into a water capital project fund to pay for those projects there. Now, the one thing I do want to remind everybody of, because it's been a year and a half ago, the CARES funding, the $1.9 million that we got in 2020, we used EMS salary and benefits to demonstrate that we were spending those funds on that, which really freed up that $1.9 million, $1.9 million and added it to our fund balance. Then we came back along and we identified about 10 projects that we said, you know, these are things we wanna do that are COVID-related, that we think it's appropriate to spend this new fund balance money on, these projects. And you might remember, there were things like doing the HVAC cleaning, the filters, the two generators that we did, one at this building, one at the admin building. We put up the drive-through shelter at the health department. We did an essential bonus for the employees, essential government worker bonus. And then, we also did, we set aside $500,000 for broadband. Hopefully, everybody recalls that and remembers that. So, an additional budget amendment that we have here is that we need to go ahead and appropriate that $500,000 that rolled into the general fund fund balance and move it over to that capital project fund that we have set up for broadband. And that's on page 136.
Is there a motion? We have a motion. Is there a second? Discussion?
Yeah, I have one. Discussion. I, you know, I'm still of the opinion that one of the dumbest things that we've ever done, aside from building the road on the, on the four-lane bypass on the west side of Washington where nobody can use it, building the school system twice the size that it needs to be so that schools are sitting there half-occupied, shutting down the hospital in Belle Haven and giving away the Beaufort County Hospital, broadband ranks with all of those really dumb things. This is gonna be a disaster before it's over with. The technology is very rapidly making this project obsolete. The example is that last week, saw an article that said that Verizon was bragging that they already had a half a million customers for their satellite broadband. All of the major companies are coming out with satellite broadband. Elon Musk is putting up satellites 24 at a time, on and on and on it goes. This is something that's gonna be like the cell phone made the hard lines not quite obsolete, but essentially obsolete. You're gonna be in the same position with this. Plus, the only reason that the government ever wanted broadband, and the government pushed broadband, right out of the Obama administration is where this came from, is so that they could spy, control, and keep tabs on the American people. This is really a bad deal.
Any other commissioner? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Four-two.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Court, Katie?
Yes, sir. Traditionally, we've held an employee appreciation luncheon once a year over the last couple of years, and this year, it was suggested that because of the uncertainty, after speaking with the civic center and some vendor, food vendors, they couldn't guarantee that they'd be able to go forward even on the day of if we were to choose a lunch date. So, management is recommending allocating $15 per employee to the individual departments to hold a departmental luncheon. And then additionally, it's recommended that in lieu of decorations, venures, small Christmas gifts, that kinda thing, that $27.07 payment be issued to each employee in their paycheck on December 3rd, which will equate to about $25, well, which it will equate to $25 per employee.
Have a motion. Is there a second? I'll second.
Of course.
Go ahead.
Is, you said that's $25 per employee?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have any more ARP money? Do we have any more ARP money?
We have $1.9 million left in ARP funding. If you're thinking of some type of employee payment, then I would look back at the CARES funding. There was about $47,000 left in the CARES funding, and I think that it's more appropriate to use CARES funding money for that than ARP funding.
Well, is it possible that we could increase that, divide that CARES money that's left into $25, maybe make it 40, 50 for the employees? I don't have it to add.
I think you could definitely do that because at this point, it's not even CARES funding. It's just general fund balance, and that's money, just unassigned money that you can, as a board, designate how to spend.
I'll also amend my motion if that's appropriate. Also... amend my motion if that's appropriate to increase that $25 by whatever amount that you have, but that 40,000 won't surpass it, if that's prompt.
Doing a quick calculation, I think we could bring it up to $150 per employee payment.
I make that motion. I amend it.
I'll still second.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner, make a decision.
Well, look, I didn't mind the $40, but this is a blatant example. This is general fund money. This is not CARES Act money. That's what the finance officer said. It's been, it's been converted from whatever it was that they gave us to begin with. It's now general fund money. We have never, in the 26 years that I've been here, dipped into fund for a spur-of-the-moment bonus of this type. And once we start this, it just keeps going. We need to back up to the $40 justification, and we need, we need to, we need to value the taxpayers of Beaufort County's money a whole lot higher than we value it right now.
Well, we must also... We must also value our employees. And believe it or not, probably 95% of our employees are Beaufort County residents. But I would, more or less, I would back it down to $50, make it $50, because you 25, I mean, they deserve something. They had worked very, very hard doing this pandemic, and everybody been rewarded, and it's time for them to be rewarded.
Okay, and I'll still hold you a second for the $50.
Mr. Chairman, there was already awards made out of money for people doing exceptional service during the pandemic. I mean, we're setting a really bad precedent here. We need to go back to the $40, which is hard to, let me finish, sir. We need to go back to the $40, which is hard to justify on its own. I was wavering on that, but I was willing to do it. But when you start dipping into the general fund as a honeypot to start rewarding employees without any justification whatsoever on whom, that's not right.
Mr. Hood, register. I mean, this thing's something that you're gonna blow a gasket in your head. It's just a vote. I mean, whether it passes or not, we don't know. You just down and then down, and we don't know. Let me finish, sir. Well, don't say a word. Don't you prick your mouth, don't you prick your mouth up when I'm talking.
I'm challenging.
I ain't gonna do it to you.
All right, hold up.
But what I'm trying to say is, I mean, you don't run this whole board. It's six of us here tonight, and if it fails, it fails. I mean, that's just the bottom line. If it fails, then I'm not gonna die if it fails, and I hope you don't die if it passes.
Mr. Chairman, what I wanna say to you, Commissioner Booth, is I'm amazed at your callous disregard and unconcern saying it doesn't matter to you what happens on a vote like this. Every vote is important, and you need to get your head in the right place where you're making decisions for the taxpayers of Beaufort County instead of rewarding your buddies.
You ought not to say anything about rewarding your buddies, 'cause you got the best reputation at doing that of anybody. I mean, you're the most filthy man up here.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Yeah, I say something. I haven't had anything. I thank you, Commissioner Booth, for bringing up the CARES Act money, 'cause we wouldn't have known if you had brought that up, that was in the general fund. Having said that, that's general fund money. That's money we can use for just about anything. We can get some of that money back to the taxpayer if we wanted to.
We do it.
We did the employee taxpayer, right, yeah, always. I like the $25. I can go as much as 40, but that's gonna be my limit as well. But I thank you anyway for bringing that up, or I would have not known that it was in the general fund, and I know that now, and from henceforth, I would be looking to get that money allocated to a very special use for the taxpayer, all the taxpayers.
I'm not, I'm not sleeping at 8 hours a night worrying about it. I mean, I'm not gonna set your brains down here.
All right. All in favor, Commissioner Booth's motion for $50 to the employees, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Four-two, it passed.
Five-one. Five-one. He's 40. He is! Yeah, you got me that now.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I just need to clarify, I just wanna clarify that Commissioner Booth included in that the individual meal stuff at the department head level. Was that included or not, or can you take an additional vote on that as well? Because it was originally 15 to do individuals at the department head level for meals, and then the other piece. So, there are actually two pieces of that.
I thought it was just the $50. That's just the $50, that's it.
Okay, so you don't wanna do any meal for him?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Manager, is your item? Broadband negotiation?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Just, there really isn't any update on this. I have had conversations with our partner... I have had conversations with our partner, River Street. In fact, I had a conversation with Mr. Coltrane, actually Saturday morning. They're continuing to watch items that are coming along. There may be some federal funding that may be appropriate, so they're continuing to watch that, and we'll come back to you when we have any additional information.
Thank you.
Did you hear anything from Keith?
I have not heard anything back from that information that we sent to Representative Kidwell, asking about the current great grant bill. What I'll tell you is if you've been reviewing the information you get from the Association County Commissioners, there are a ton of bills out there that have information by broadband. They don't know whether any of those are going to move. They're anticipating that once the budget comes out, there may be some language in the budget that will address some of those broadband issues. But they're not sure if any of those individual bills are going to move forward.
The cable channel broadcast equipment?
Yes, sir, thank you. Members of the board, at the last meeting, we talked about the cable broadcast, reached out to Sudden Lake, and we had some negotiations with them, and they've agreed to allow us to have access to that cable channel, essentially run it ourselves. So, in order to do that, what we're currently doing is we're dropping off the DVD with them, and they're putting it into their plan. What this would do is this would essentially give you ownership of the PEG channel, and you would be able to run it, program it, broadcast off of it, and do like you would normally do. In order to do that, we would have to have some additional equipment. That would be a Hypercaster B-100 license for that and support. What that would do is that piece of equipment would be at the head end of the cable company. We would remote into that through the internet, we would upload videos, we would schedule videos, and we would be responsible for how that channel is broadcast. So, you see there that it's a total of about $16,500. There are existing funds for that. So, if you so choose to move forward, that's what it would be for this new level of service. I will tell you that I had a conversation with one of their engineers, and the reason that the broadcast is what the broadcast is, is those are analog channels, they're not digital channels. So, it doesn't matter what we send to them, it's coming out as analog. They are currently converting some of their channels over. Obviously, they're going to convert those type channels last. They're going to convert their revenue generating channels to high definition before they do that. And he said, once they had an opening, then they would certainly move ours over to a high definition, but at this time, it's analog channels.
Commissioner Deppard?
Considering the standards, $16,500 does not sound too much. However, I would like to be fairly well assured that the digital representation that we make of these meetings will be accommodated by whatever changes that they make later on. Is there any way we can get an assurance on that?
I mean, all I can tell you is what the engineer told me, and he said that as soon as they had channels available, they would convert ours to a digital channel, but until they had channels.
But that $16,500, which we're paying them for a service more than anything else, as well as little equipment. I'm sure some of that's got to be service oriented. Is all equipment oriented?
It's equipment, and it's a license, and it is support.
Okay, license and support. So, that will hopefully ensure us that what we give them, very top quality, we could probably give a 4K if we wanted to with the equipment we have, that they'll be able to broadcast that, whatever their norms are at that time. I mean, if their norms are 1080, they can do 1080. If it's 720, they can do 720. If it's 2K, they can do 2K.
Again, all I can say to you is the engineer said that we're currently on the analog channel, and until they have capacity in their system to convert ours to a digital channel, then we're going to be analog. When we convert to digital, I assume we'll be at whatever highest level they're broadcasting their regular on, so.
Okay, well, okay. Is there any way we can get insurance for that?
Not really.
No? No, it's unlikely. Man, they got problems.
Several months ago, we were discussing how to inform the residents, and I look to my mother, because she doesn't have a computer, she doesn't have a smartphone, she has a flip phone. And so, a lot of the information that we wish to get to that type of public, it's just not there. She does get cable, she does watch it. And I remember years ago, when Sudden Lake, well, not Sudden Lake, it was COTTS cable or whatever, first started, they used that page as just a rotational information page, and I could foresee this happening there. But I mean, you know, like made in Beaufort County graphics, all you have to do is throw that on there. And it might be, you know, some work for somebody, but it's not that bad a work. I've done that stuff before. So, I'd love to see this happen because it does reach a person that's not going to get it on. I mean, if you're flushing hydrants somewhere, you can put that on there. So, it's a great way to inform Beaufort County.
Commissioner Booth?
Is that going to be on the, oh, excuse me, is that going to be on the Channel 5, or is it going to be on the city's government channel?
This will be a separate channel. The city still has their channel right now. I think that's seven, I think, and this would be, this would be on the basic level. I think it's Channel 5.
Who is going to program, who's going to set the program for this if we do this? And how is the program going to be set?
Well, right now, it's, if this goes forward and we start this process, then we'll probably, we'll obviously bring back some guidelines for recommendations from the board to give us some policies relating to that, about what goes on and what doesn't go on it. And then it would be programmed and managed by someone out of my office, someone, some of our IT folks. I told you last meeting, I was going to bring you back a position, and I'm going to bring you back another position. I've heard this board say that we have issues with getting information out, so I'm going to bring you back a position that's Communications Director. They would do this, they would manage these meetings, they would put out information, they would manage our website, they would do all those things. They were currently bits and pieces. I'm doing a little bit, somebody's doing a little bit, somebody else is doing a little bit. We don't have consistent and concise work done. So, the two pieces of that is, we'll bring you back some policies because the board needs to have some policies on exactly what gets played on this channel. And they have some guidance. I mean, there's certain things you can't, you can't put commercial things on there. It can only be government related information. But as Commissioner Walker said, there is a, this software will allow us to do billboards, that scrolling billboard kind of stuff. It's, in fact, all it is, is it's a PowerPoint presentation. You put together a PowerPoint presentation, and it scrolls that PowerPoint presentation. But if you want to do this right, then you need to dedicate someone who's in charge of it, who looks after it, and it's not just this. There's a whole lot more stuff that goes on in this county that needs to be managed instead of the piecemeal way in which we're managing it now.
We're talking about a channel that's going to play something 24 hours a day?
That's correct. They would, they would want you to have that programmed at least 24 hours a day.
Well, let me give you a little history on this. This channel belonged to Beaufort County way back when. It's really our channel, it's set up under some kind of an agreement somewhere with the people. The city of Washington has a similar channel that they own, it's their channel. So, you know, Sudden Lake, they really didn't give us anything. They just returned what was ours because we had essentially abandoned it.
Well, I think the city owns theirs with the chamber, and there's another person involved or a group that's involved. But they had to buy this equipment too, and it's up in there at the city offices. And that's where they feed it in there.
Wasn't the channel, wasn't the channel that you said you gave us, was that the one that was negotiated during the contract?
This is it, yeah. This is.
Franchise agreement.
Yeah, that's right.
It's been ongoing for.
We don't, we don't have franchise agreements anymore to cable companies. The state took over that 10, 12 years ago. So, there was initially, when you negotiated those things with franchise agreements, that's correct, but the state took over those 15 years ago. So, we don't have franchises anymore. You will hear, you will still hear that being said occasionally, and people look at us and go, well, there's a problem with my cable, and they say it's franchised. We don't have franchise agreements anymore. The state took over all of us.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Richardson?
Oh, you got any votes?
Yeah, is this a motion? I want to make a motion that we spend the $16,500 for the Hypercast B-100 to get into TV production.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your right hand. Six to zero. But it's here, just item for discussion.
Yeah, well, all I'm doing is keeping, you know, the public library. One of these days, they're going to change the rules on some of these and say, oh, by the way, we're going to do something a little bit different. So, we don't know what politician is going to do from one minute to the next. So, I want to keep this out there.
And then the mega sites, I want to keep that out there too, thank you. The, that's all I wanted to do was have an honorable mention on that. Video recordings of meetings, I think we've already done that. We can move on. Deputies, I believe this shows that there are 13 vacancies within the Sheriff's Department, if I'm reading this correctly. If that's different, Charlie, let us know. So, moving on, I'm moving through this stuff pretty fast. The status of all litigation involving the county, and that's everything that's going on, I don't know how we can discuss this without going into closed session.
I'm wondering about numbers.
Well, you know.
I can give you numbers if you want. Numbers, you know, we've got some new cases that have come in where the county has been sued, nothing very serious, having to do with right of ways, new bridges, taking some land, and the owners of the land owe back taxes. I filed one answer in that, I've got two others that were going, they give us a whole year to file an answer on this. It's, they are Department of Transportation.
You mean the Department of Transportation took the land, back taxes are owed on the land?
They are in the process of taking the land. They have filed their complaint to take the land, and they named Beaufort County because a search of the title reveals that we are due some of it.
We have a lien on it, so we become a part.
Correct.
Okay, I got you.
So, there's three of those. We've got our litigation, Beaufort County versus Amerasorsberg and Drug Corporation, and approximately 20 other defendants were involved in that litigation still and will be for the foreseeable future. You've got two wrongful termination claims against the Sheriff's Department. They're being handled by the Wamble Firm in Winston-Salem. Been passed out to them by our insurer. We have one lawsuit for death at the jail against the Sheriff's Office that's still pending. That's also defended by the Wamble Firm in Winston-Salem. There's been a motion, the last I heard, there was a motion for summary judgment pending for the judges, and that's been several months ago, so. As far as I know, there has not been, nothing done with it so far. That's pretty much the extent right now. We're not doing any of the other claims for taxes and for sales and all that kind of stuff.
Oh, so, yeah, that's always, okay, but that's all the suits that we've got against the county. Does that include social services and anything they may have, the Health Department, anything they may have?
No.
Does not include cases that would be going on over there, those two places?
Well, it would, it would be in the Health Department. I'm not aware of it.
Oh, okay.
With the Health Department right now.
Okay. Well, that's all I wanted, just an update.
Okay. Use my. Commissioner?
Uh, which one have I got?
Oh, you could have done it. I'll tell you. Commissioner Deppard?
I'm going to speak in defense of defending our sovereign southern border. Some of you may say this is not our business. I will tell you, it is our business because we spend a lot of money dealing with illegal aliens that come to this area. We educate their children, we find that they're getting benefits that they shouldn't be getting, that we're paid for by the folks that have lived here and made this country. And while I support immigrants, I support them coming to this country the right way. And that's a process, and the process is not only for the people from south of us, but for the entire world that want to come here. The entire world cannot come and live in America. We cannot support the world just because there's governments that are poor. And I would argue, if we keep going down the road we've been going with our government in the last 10 months, there could be a whole lot of folks that don't want to come here anymore. There's been a miscalculation by the Democratic Socialist Party that thinks that if we allow all these folks from south of the four states that border our southern border, then they will be able to forever change the demographics of this nation, and by resettling these people into our construct of our democratic republic, that they will be able to never lose another election. What we're finding is that people that are Hispanic and living in America, a greater propensity of them now want the southern border to be managed because they're seeing their quality of life go down the tubes. Lately, and this did not make my resolution because it just happened this week, the Biden-Harris Administration want to give over $420,000, I think upwards of that, to maybe $450,000 to people who were wrongly separated for being in our country illegally. That's driving a lot of folks that care about our nation just nuts. And it shows a great propensity by this administration to disparage the rule of law that has been the foundation of this republic since our inception. So, basically, I'm going to read this because this will make my argument, and I would expect to get a six oh vote, because the rule of law is important from wherever you sit and wherever you stand. Because if you think that a two-tiered legal system, which benefits one or more of us, is going to make this nation stronger, it's not. It will tear it down to a point that there will be insurrection, real insurrection in this nation. Now, I don't know where it's going to come from, but it will be that way. The only way we as a people can be assured that we can live free is for the laws to be applied equally, and right now, they are not. I think I've summed up a lot of that in my resolution, and I'll begin by reading it now. In defense of defending our sovereign southern border, whereas it is a sworn duty of the executive branch to defend our sovereign southern border and to remain vigilant in that charge, just as our republic's north border with Canada is alternately being enforced, and whereas the previous Trump administration did vigorously enforce the defense of our southern border, of the southern border, even while beleaguered by the fake Russia collusion investigation and the restriction of proper funding by pro-open border Democratic Socialist-controlled Congress, and whereas the Biden-Harris Administration did enact a series of new open border initiatives immediately after taking office as a means to fulfill their campaign promises for an open border policy, not least of which, unconstitutionally ending the Trump-era Remain in Mexico Agreement with Mexico regarding the amnesty conundrum, which is mostly a planned process for the appearance of a more legal entry of our southern border, and whereas the Biden-Harris Administration has offered a pain lip service as to their resolute response to the ravages of COVID while alternately resettling 1.8 million illegal migrants across our southern border while refusing to manage the massive COVID infection rate of illegal migrants in excess of 20% as they transport those migrants here illegally into our unsuspecting heartland, and whereas an estimated 2.4 million of known illegal migrants are projected to violate our southern border, creating a projected estimate of 4.8 illegal migrants, including the getaways mostly into the core of our heartland, where this product of the Biden-Harris resettlement plan to enact the Browning of America is the manifestation of the Democratic Socialists fervent affront to our democracy by the. of the Democratic Socialists' fervent affront to our democracy by the planned abrupt demographic shift to vote illegal migrants as soon as is possible, and whereas the southern border spanning the borders of four states have been accurately described as our nation's largest crime scene, where the illegals, the coercive force of the Biden-Harris resettlement plan are aided in this multi-layered endeavor by the narcotics and human trafficking cartels of Mexico, while in the service of the Biden-Harris administration, now grow richer and more powerful to commit the evil acts to distribute massive unprecedented quantities of the narcotic fentanyl, human slaves, and even terrorists into our United States of America, and whereas border states such as Texas have intensely been affected by the full frontal assault by the Biden-Harris resettlement plan, and that reactive Texas government has now called upon the National Guard, their National Guard, to enforce state and federal border laws to stem this planned invasion, and in the complete absence of any real consistent federal enforcement, which is now their state and federal constitutional and sovereign right to do so, and whereas illegal immigration is a mammoth long-term cost to local governments, both state and county governments, who are forced to pay the bulk for the necessity, excuse me, the necessary infrastructure to accommodate the caring for these illegal migrants resettled in states such as North Carolina. Therefore, let it be resolved that it is incumbent, it is an incumbent necessity for local governments to be aware of the severe consequences of the Biden-Harris resettlement plan to enact the Browning of America, to know that they may seek constitutional remedy to defend our sovereign southern border, thereby reversing Biden-Harris, the Biden-Harris plan to purposefully and forever change or destroy our constitutional republic. And I ask for your vote, and as a motion.
And I ask, is there a second? I second it, and I add to this, we're gonna have about 5 million new people in the United States this year because of what Stan is talking about. This is a really big deal.
Yeah, I would like to also add that we we send this to our constitu- uh, our congressional delegation, and also the delegations of the four border states as well.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of Commissioner DeFric's motion, raise your right hand. All opposed? No action.
I'll make a motion. He want all, he want all white folk here, that's what he want. He ain't nothing asked me. He said Browning of America.
I I really don't think this is a race thing. This is a, this is a real thing.
Well, why did, why did you say Browning of America?
Those are the words used by the Democratic Socialist Party. And they're act, they use these words. This is the words they use. This is their plan.
And then you think I'm gonna vote for it? You want to get rid of me now?
Well, hold on a minute, hold on a minute. This is a race thing by your party.
Well, it might be, and I'm not gonna be a part of it.
Actually, you are a part of it by making it a race thing right now.
All right, we, this this is, this is a dead end road. We ain't gonna, this dead end road. Any other commissioners? Because we have a Commissioner comment section, I won't deny. Hearing none, is there a motion? Well, you, I hope you don't bring that same thing back up again. Now, you you you've done it.
I'll say this, this is an important issue, y'all make light of it, but I've been right from from years and years ago, bringing these these issues up, and now it's happening. And and this is gonna be a massive issue. None, you three do not feel that it is.
I don't.
But it is going, no, of course you don't. You don't do math. I do math. And math is very important, and when the taxpayers cannot afford their taxes, I will remind them that you thought this was a race thing.
Oh, yes, I did. I'm not gonna deny.
Motion, motion, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Race all the time.
Second. All in favor? We adjourn.